Well, thanks a bunch, you guys. I don't know if I mentioned at our last meeting that we were gone all month but able to participate. So thanks for, thanks for piping Melissa and I in. Do we have a full house in the room? It looks like I see Meredith and Sam. And is that John? And yeah, and then David, and then is that Ashton in the corner? And Lois, and Phil, and Phil, who's next to you? I can't see this person. Oh, Simra, hi, Simra. And Nick, and then let's see, do we have Lori? And I see Sarah. And what about Lori?
She couldn't make it today.
And I saw Tracy. Great. Anyone else in the room that we should?
We got some off-camera over here.
That's what I wondered. Is that, who is that waving?
Yeah, Cherie.
Oh, hi, Cherie. I think this is the first time we've had everybody present one way or the other in a while. So thanks, everybody. Okay, well, let's call this to order and get started. What do you say? Okay, cool beans. Well, I haven't read the land acknowledgement in a while, so I'll read it because that might be easier than trying to pass the buck. We'd like to acknowledge we're on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land we call home, our relationship to this history, and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European American immigration that began in the 1800s. Okay, could I get a motion to bring the agenda to the table, please?
I would bring the agenda.
Super. Did anybody have any additions or edits to the agenda before we proceed?
Just a couple typos, page two, line 48.
On the agenda or the minutes?
Oh, sorry. Pardon me. Are you moving on to minutes?
Oh, okay. All right. So all those in favor of the agenda as published, will you say aye? Opposed? Super. Okay, Lois, do you want to bring the minutes to the table?
Sure. I moved to discuss the minutes and would like to point out a couple typos.
Okay, who wants to? I think we have to second that. Is that right?
I seconded.
Okay, cool. All right, Lois, what are your edits?
Page two, line 48. Ms. Hayward asked the commission's priorities for public engagement. What the commission's priorities for public engagement are. Suggestion is to insert are at the end. And then the second thing is page three, line 12. That's a small typo, just needing instead of metting.
That's a good catch. Yeah.
Nice minutes otherwise.
And then I think, Nick, did you catch Commissioner Yon's?
I did. Thank you for that. I got that note this afternoon.
Okay, great. Do you want to restate that just so that we can?
Yeah, I was page two down the line. Where was it? No, I lost it.
I think 25 and 26.
Yes, 25 and 26. I had, I don't remember exactly how I proposed rewrite, maybe Nick, you can read that, but I just indicated, this says, indicated that his colleagues at King County have been struggling with including the best available science requirement. The meaning there was to get at, it is a heavy lift. And I was asking when or if the city is planning to update best available science, which is a requirement. When you change your code for critical areas in particular, following a comprehensive plan update. So that was a question. So I just provided a sentence that maybe was a little more correct as to my understanding of where the county is on that. If you want to read that.
I do not have it in front of me, but I did have it loaded in the email, so I'm sure it gets.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
That is. I do have it right here. It says, change to Commissioner Kajay asked about the timing of updating the code such as critical area code with best available science, noting that his King County colleagues are finding this to be a very heavy lift. Thank you.
And also I was on Zoom at that meeting, so I wasn't absent.
And I did get that changed as well. Thank you.
Is there any discussion about these edits? Okay, let's see. Nick, can you help me remember when we have edits? Do we have to? Do we have to have a substitute motion, or can we just motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Motion to approve the minutes as edited.
Okay, would, let's see, Sam, you want to start that for us?
Yeah, I moved to approve the minutes as edited.
A second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, excellent. Look at us, just clipping right along. Okay, let's see, we have next meeting date is, Nick, do you have a calendar in front of you? Sorry, I didn't close mine. October 10th. As per usual, if you're not going to be able to join, please let myself and Nick know prior to, you know, give us at least a week's notice so we can make sure we have a quorum. Okay, let's see. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, we have one.
Great. Hi, Sarah.
No, you can come take my chair. Hello, my name is Sarah Phillips. I'm the Chair of the Climate Action Committee. And I'm here because you're going to have to add an element on climate to your comprehensive plan. And we wanted to just sort of throw out there that we really are eager to work with you collaboratively on how that element gets shaped. We've done a lot of work on what the, we've looked at the emission levels in Lake Forest Park. And we sort of determined six areas that we're interested in working in. We're going to have a report sort of a plan that we will hope to deliver to the council on within, in six weeks at their last meeting. I'm going to catch that last council before it changes as we've made friends with them. And then, and then we're going to shift towards implementation. And it's sort of where we've begun to do that already. How do you? We've been working with Kenmore and Shoreline on a series over the summer on electrification. It was a little distress to hear you all happy about gas. We want your gas out. We're going to figure out how to keep you warm with electricity or your battery operated car. But the electrification is one of the things we talked about, gas stoves, and one of the presentations on solar in Kenmore. And coming up later in September, there's going to be a heat pump presentation. And we're working on the kinds of things where we can be refined, where we can sort of help people make this transition to emissions reductions. But as you all know, there's a change in the cost line requirements and they'll have to be. And we just wanted to get our ore in the water that we're eager to work collaboratively in terms of you're moving on that, what, how we can help you and what you want from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks for coming too. I know that we've come over to your meetings and I think we have a lot of eagerness to work together. And I just wanted to ask, I think that when we met with you before, you guys were very much still in sort of a processing mode. Is that report something that you can share with us too, when you're, when you're ready to give it to council? Could we get CC'd on, on that and be familiar with it? Or could you present to us on it if you want?
We'd be happy to come and present to you on it. We're, we wrote, we look at these consultants, and I have consultant and so right now it's a big mess. We have all the, all the information and we're in the process of turning it into a report. And then, so that's happening in the next six weeks or a couple of weeks. And once we have that, I'm not sure what the process is. I think we go to council first. Is that, I don't know what the drill is. I need help. As soon as we can get it to you, we would be happy to briefly go and share.
That, that would be great. I think we'd want to pass it on to our consultants as well because we've, we have talked about this and understand that these are some additions we need to make. We just want to make sure they're congruent with the priorities that have been set by your committee. And so I think there's a lot to do. And just as a signal to our expert team, we are going to want to reference their work and hear from them to make sure that the kinds of revisions we make to our comp plan do reflect the priorities that they've set in their work. So thanks, Sarah. Okay, let's see, let me get back to the agenda. And we are, sorry, doing a lot of scrolling here, y'all. Okay, are there any other citizen comments? Okay, super. Then I think we are ready to move on to, so Lori's not here. So Simra or Tracy, are you planning, I'm sorry, council members, Riddle and Fieratani?
I can give a brief report out, Tracy, if I leave anything out, you're more than welcome, a council member. So yeah, briefly, so council was generally on hiatus for the last half of August. It's typical, we usually try to take that time off. Lots of people on vacation anyway, so it's a good time for us to take off. So our next council meeting is actually this Thursday. So there's not a lot to report. But we did have the picnic in the park the end of last weekend, I believe it was. I went, it was lovely, great attendance. Upcoming council issues, we are also looking at housing on, on Thursday. We're looking to renew our interim regulations that have been in place since September of 21. Because we are also waiting for county data in order for us to turn that into a permanent regulation. So right now, we are currently just presenting to the council to just renew what we currently have, which allows emergency shelters and permanent supportive housing in line with Washington state law. And then also this Thursday, there's going to be several police department issues swearing in of a police department, a police officer and transitioning to NORCOM and a few other issues that are critical for our police department to continue their high level of service to our community. So that's, that's any, any other topics? Tracy, do you want to come over here?
Sure, I'll stand next to her. So one thing I wanted to add is that there's a work session prior to the regular business meeting on Thursday, which will address speeding issues of traffic coming and pedestrian safety.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair.
Of course. Thank you so much. And I'm glad you guys got some time off. I'm sure it was well earned. All right, let's see, Phil or Nick, do you want to let us know what your staff memorandum is?
Honestly, the staff memorandum is just going to hand it off to Andrew to walk you through the housing needs analysis. I think if you then scroll through that, you've done a lot of interesting information as I did. So I'm just going to let them take it away. So we can get this thing rolling and get into the meat of why we're here tonight.
Thank you.
Before we do that, can we just like set a parameter? Because you could, there's a lot of slides there, right? A lot of information. So would you prefer that we stay silent as you go through these slides and then, you know, have our questions towards the end?
So I believe we, we shared yours all up a long form version of the report. Yeah, with the text, we have a slightly slimmed down version of slides, just for easier sort of, I think, comprehension. So it's on the screen, but we have that in front of us as well, and so we'll, you know, refer to that, ask questions. I think, you know, we, as we go, I think questions is, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, the intention was, you know, today where it's all about existing, your existing housing conditions and gaps. So we're not even looking at the future. And so I think digging into the data, answering all your questions.
And I also mentioned that these are in similar chunks to the ones, you know, public characteristics, demographic, housing stock. So there's some breaks there where we can maybe, but yeah, whatever, I think.
I realized that there are a few people here, I think, that weren't in attendance at our last meeting. Just briefly introduce ourselves, I guess. I think you were, you were on the meeting for Zoom, but a couple of persons are recognized. So I'm David Fiss from Cleveland Consulting Group, associate there. We're from Portland, Oregon. So we're a housing, real estate and economics firm. Helping out with your comp plan, focused on housing and economic development, those are the elements that we're, but today is focused on housing.
Yeah, hi, I'm Andrew Oliver, also with Cleveland Consulting Group.
And I'm Christina Hayward, with SCJ Alliance. I'm the overall project manager of the comp plan update.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I do. All right, with that, I'll turn it back for housing part, we find data.
Yes. This is housing part one. There will be a housing part two, which we will talk about later, but just so you're aware, there's more, potentially part three. Yeah. You want to start?
I can briefly introduce, maybe in front of the more of the slides, but yeah, so as mentioned, so I think in our first meeting when we first came up here a little over a month ago, we, there was a discussion, you know, wanting to, before we look to the future, sort of focus on the targets and all of the sort of land capacity and legislative requirements, we really need to understand where we stand today. So part of, you know, updating your housing element in the comprehensive plan is doing a housing needs assessment. Part of that is land capacity, looking to the future. But that's not what we're going to talk, we have a couple of slides to touch on that towards the end to sort of talk about where we're going after this. But today is really focused on, in first, for bullets, really digging into where Lake Forest Park stands today, with the housing needs, gas analysis, some interesting findings and looking forward to discussion on that.
So first section is on population. As you probably know from packets, there have been not a lot of recent large changes to population of Lake Forest Park. The estimated 2044 population from OFM and the state is 15,666, so that's a 0.47% annual growth rate. So as you can see, aside from annexation, obviously here, the population has been pretty stable since 2000. Then we have slides on the people who live in Lake Forest Park. Lake Forest Park residents are older than regional and statewide averages. The first two bars here show the progression from 2010 to 2021 in the city. And then here we have King County and the state for comparison. So if you look at the most, you know, latest census data from 2021, there's a higher share of older residents. And, but there's also been an increase since 2010 in, you know, young adults aged 20, 34 here, unfortunately, 19%. So that's kind of interesting. Often when we see an increase in older residents, you think about potential accessibility needs, households who may wish to downsize. And, but at the same time, you know, these younger residents may sort of have counteracting a need, you know, if they're starting families, they might be having units. So there's kind of two interesting things happening at the same time here. Looking at race and ethnicity, first on the totals on the left and then geography on the right. And, and we did talk a little bit at the last meeting, but anyway, so it's obviously considerably less diverse than King County as a whole. Among non-white populations, there's 7% of population is Asian. And 6% other and two or more races. This is really increasing a lot in census data overall. The share of people identifying as mixed race and there's talk of new mixed race categories for the next census because it's suddenly becoming, you know, pretty blurry. But anyway, we also mapped the locations, the percentage of the five blocks that flag indigenous people of color populated by census block. And this is from the 2020 census because we're able to get data at the census block level, which is like a really small geography with the 2020 census, as opposed to the data from 2021, which is usually at like a census track level or block or block group. Yeah. So there are, you know, concentrations of, of, of different, you know, degrees of racial diversity in different parts of the city, especially in the southern gateway and up here towards the town center. But, you know, they, they sort of correlate with the areas where you have more multifamily housing, which isn't so surprised, but, but it's important to be aware of.
We want to just pause off. Yeah, there, yeah, there's other information in here that is not on the slide necessarily, but considering household needs related to race and ethnicity, some of the challenges that can come, it's compelling challenges. That some of the information is not actually in here, but that when you look at the tenure or homeownership versus rental tenants, 88% of owners in Lake Forest Park are white, whereas 57% of renters are white. And those are, you know, in general are greater causability when we're talking about homeowners versus renters, of course, as well as some based around wealth building and things like that. So there, there is also a component in the conference, in the update around the housing element within the two, what's dubbed in the legislation racially disparate impacts. And so this is sort of beginning to get at some of those maybe findings. And then not necessarily that there needs to be policy or there doesn't need to be code updates or regular changes related to these, but policies that recognize if there are any sort of impacts identified in your housing needs and housing gaps and sort of how city plans to address those things. So that's something that will be further stored or need to be sort of incorporated into this.
Okay, so next is households. Households are just defined as anybody who lives in a housing unit. So it could be a family, could be an individual person, could be any group of related or unrelated people that consented, says. And so when we're looking at these metrics, it's not by person, but it's by household. So this, as David was just mentioning, we're looking at tenure here, which is the census term for whether you rent or own your house. Not, not, not how long you live in your house, but it sounds like. So we, you know, you have a larger share of homeowners than regional and statewide average. So it's almost 80% of households in Lake Forest Park own their house. But as we were also mentioning, there's a pretty large disparity between incomes of renters and owners in the city. So of these 20% of people who, who rent, you know, a very large portion of them are earning less than 100% of the AMI, area median income. And I did include a slide or a page in the packet about sort of overly long the definition of income because it can be really confusing. But basically, all of these statistics that talk about AMI and households are based on the, the HUD's definition of area median income, which is sort of like an income for the whole of King County. And so it's, it's pretty high because 21, sorry, it's $141,000. And, and that, that area median income is not the same as the average household income in Lake Forest Park. So AMI area median income is the larger median income. And this is used to calculate housing affordability. So people who are eligible for subsidized housing, there, the income limit that they would need to be underneath to qualify for subsidized housing is based on this larger area median income. So when we see AMIs throughout here, that's what it refers to. On the other hand, when you talk about median household income in Lake Forest Park, which we'll do later on, that's, that's just like the census survey of how many people make here. So.
On that, in long form, on the tenure and income slide, I just noticed that that's the first time you use area median income, but you don't actually say what it is.
Yeah.
Four or five slides later.
Yeah.
And I think it shows up later as 146.5.
Okay.
Something so just, just to, it would be good to have that value show up first.
Yeah, yeah. Or we can in fact put the explanatory slide before this one. Okay, and renters also have small household sizes, though probably not a surprise, but this shows the total number of households on the x-axis of each size in the city, broken down by ours and renters. So overall, you can see the, the largest share of households are, are two-person households, about 2,000 households made from two people. But the, the largest blue section of percentage is in one and two-person households. Three and four-person households are much less likely to be renters. So again, that sort of is telling us some information about the needs of the population here for, you know, different sizes of units based on, based on income and tenure and, and size. So here's a household income. So this is, this is census data on the incomes of people who live here in the previous census, 2010, and the most recent American Community Survey in 2020 months. So there's been quite an increase in incomes here and also in King County and statewide. Median income here is, is higher than both by quite a bit, but the sort of change in income levels is pretty consistent across, you know, across the region. And your, your increase in income sort of tracks with what's going on across the country. We also want to put this on a map to see, you know, as we're looking at these spatial implications of, of, of all these metrics. And again, you have, you know, some areas where people are earning under $100,000 on average, households, I should say, not people. And, you know, some other areas where it's, you know, twice as much. So the, the distribution is not even across the city. And again, you know, when you look at this and alongside the distribution of race and ethnicity across the city and of housing type and, you know, other indicators, could just give you a more granular view of what's going on across the city for all the different people who live here rather than just looking at one single number of income or. This is probably the most like mathy section, but cost burden is another HUD definition. So a household is considered to be cost burdened if they spend more than 30% of their income on housing costs. That could be ownership or rental. So 30% of your income on rent or on mortgage and utilities. So overall here, as you can see, 25% of households in the city are spending 30% of their, of their income or more on housing costs. And the 9% here in yellow are what's called severely cost burdened. So that's 50% that people are spending more than half of their income on. Again, when you break it down by owners and renters, probably not totally surprising that renters are facing higher rates of cost burden than owners, but you know, also people are, are paying a lot of their, some people are paying a lot of their. So this, this compares cost burden with the income of households. So this is the lowest income households, sort of low, moderate households, moderate households, higher income households here. And also not a surprise, but you can see sort of some concrete numbers here on, on the share of households that are earning, you know, very low incomes. The vast majority of them, more than two-thirds, are spending, you know, large portion of their income on, on rent.
How would HUD calculate these numbers?
Good question. This comes from this data called the Conference of Housing Affordability Factories. So they basically correlate income data from the census over, or from the American Community Survey over like five-year period. And they, they break it down by, you know, census blocks and small geographies, and then they correlate those with households and counts. So it's, it's a, it's a big and complicated data set, but it's, and it's also a little bit old. It's from 2019. It takes them forever to come out with this stuff, but they basically, yeah, they, I don't know if they look at each, they, they don't think they look at each individual household in the, you know, but they look at pretty small sample sizes and then extract it from there. Okay, so that's, that's the sort of community profile section, looking at people and households. Any other questions?
Just the note that I appreciate and place some information on disabilities.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know. We always give it over some information in the packet. So if there are questions on that.
Pretty data rich. Okay, so now we're going to the housing units themselves.
Can I ask for clarification? Did somebody in the room ask for data in this section about um? Those that are uh physically have physical n- needs.
Yeah, well, I think um you just mentioned that it was in the packet.
It's just an appreciation that's included in the packet.
In the back, okay, thank you.
The slide or page fifteen in the in the packet uh has uh.
It's.
Thank you.
For anybody trying. A request for, I don't know if you can ask for more graphs, but I would be really interested in um. The kind of the age comparison to renters and homeowners and also um that the cost burden, you know. Age is a large factor.
I concur. Yeah.
Cost burden are, oh yeah, there's also uh in the chess, there's. The chance also has like a. Uh like just general older household category, they look cost burden in that way, and I think they have more detail. Anyway, yeah, we can definitely.
Later into the report, we're talking about the gap between income and and the price prices of homes.
And I was curious if I could. I may uh for the race and ethnicity, I was curious um of like the the two thousand ten census or whatnot and like how we've changed. So that, I mean, that's not a predictor of future, but it's kind of gives us an understanding how our community has already been evolving. Um so I don't know if that's some data that'd be easy to to slice into that.
Yes, so bring you up to to bring to my dream or no twenty twenty. Good. Um, okay, housing, housing units, so uh. Most housing in Lake Forest Park is in single-family attached units, eighty percent. Uh eleven percent is in larger apartment buildings, uh which leaves the rest in this sort of middle housing category, which of course is. On everyone's mind these days. Um. And, you know, the contrary to, you know, what's happening in the counties, you can see here, um and of course, not sure it's not a surprise. Uh but a lot of a lot less housing has been built here in recent years. Um if you look at, you know, here, you get seventy-five percent of your housing stock was built before nineteen eighty. Uh whereas like less than half of of the housing in countywide has been built since nineteen eighty. So the development has been have been obviously different. Um. You know, there's there's a lot of factors at play there, um but it's certainly uh notable when you're talking about housing supply and housing price and when they're getting built and how much is getting built.
Part of that, of course, has to do with the types of housing that are currently permitted, also land availability, which is something that's mentioned later on as well. Um so. Of course, yeah, King County has has a whole very different part, but it's.
Uh this is a comparison that's always instructive, but also can be a little um miss, you know, obviously confusing, but um, you know. Uh has has a lot of components to it. So this shows the. The number of bedrooms here on the left uh in in your housing units, three quarters or so, as you can see, have three or more bedrooms. On the other hand, you have a lot of smaller households, as we saw earlier on. So, you know. It's probably more than half, sixty-one percent of households are made up of one or two people. Now, it's not the per script that we say that people, you know, should. Obviously have to live in a house that exactly matches the size of their household, you know, we all have. You know, different needs and desires for what size of houses we live in and. Really fine, yeah, exactly, um guest rooms and all that. But at the same time, it it can indicate. Um if there's a lack of smaller units, that uh that the choice may not be present for me. So that that's the the main reason why we look at this. Uh comparison is to see, well, what kind of housing is available to people uh based on, you know, uh the potential household sizes that they uh. Or the the potential housing unit sizes that they might, you know, want or need. And especially if there's only larger households available, uh housing units available, uh those obviously usually are more expensive. So uh it's it's instructive to look at this to see that, you know, there is a disconnect there. Um. But also to see what what may or may not be available based on the sizes of households.
I have a question. So is this the document that is going to eventually go in the second section of the conference plan update sort of the? Is intended that?
This will, yeah, so so this is the first draft.
Yeah, this is the draft that will end up being sort of the background document. So the house. Um but again, this is this still completely not including the land capacity analysis, which is sort of, yes, to be honest.
And or more graphs that.
I think, so I think Melissa has a question.
Oh, yeah.
I just had a question about the percentage of households that are made up of one or two people. Is that trapping with age?
Um thi- this is just um all households, so uh this is probably something that we could definitely add. Uh write it down by different graphics. Uh yeah, this is just all households.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering if there's a correlation between the fact that we have a lot of older. Folks that live in this community and, you know, their their kids are, you know, old and grown and.
Um, yeah, so I I think uh, yeah, I think we should look at that. Well, that's something we could definitely include it and then sort of a more nuanced look at this. Uh this data, I would say that that is a fairly safe assumption to make or something that we certainly see in other communities as well. Uh a lot of a lot of folks empty nesters that stick around in their homes that they've had, they've been in for a generation. Um and again, it's sort of species here. Again, this is not saying that there is absolutely a disconnect between um, you know, your household and the housing availability. But there could be demand for these smaller units if folks are interested in downsizing but remaining in the community they lived. For a generation uh then that that could be uh indication of this here.
Thanks.
Waiting to get a cut of the data about actual tenure in household. So how long did people actually live in their household versus the county and state averages? I think that would be a length of the data.
Yeah, that's in the census. It's buried in the detail, but I had five, four, yeah, that we can have a look.
On page, oh, sorry, on page twenty-one, we have a household.
It's lower than, yeah, right. Yeah, there's a smaller, that is insane, that there's a small share of, but that's just uh individual, one-person household, so. Right, be interesting to see um two-person households. If we just look at plain household size like this by age bracket. Uh I think that's in there too. Everything is in the census somewhere, but.
I I think it would be nice, Christina, if we've uh flagged this particularly to help inform some of our community outreach because. I think this slide um. Is revealing in terms of uh number of people in a household and the size of the houses. Both for trying to assess downsized demand as well as entry level demand. Um. And so I just, I think that's something that we we could try to unpack it, you know, where where do we have some significant gaps in our inventory? You know, is this by choice or is it, you know, just an absence of diversity uh in our in our housing?
Thanks, Matty. Uh and we'll talk, we'll we'll talk a little bit, a little bit more about um public engagement next time.
Absolutely, thank you.
But I think that is a good point in putting out this. This is really pointing out the the housing mix discussion. It's not necessarily, you know. It is maybe safe to say that there could be demand uh related to smaller units or or entry level housing. Um but this is also not uncommon in many, many communities seeing this mismatch because. Most communities do not have sort of even housing mix um related to the sort of household size and bedrooms. Um and that's to say, most communities, many communities do not have sort of uh that that mix that you might want to see for smaller. Or households as well, or just the diversity of options within your housing supply. It's not something that most communities have done to get over supplying over. Looking past number of then it's.
Okay. Okay, housing market, so. Uh next section talks about housing price and and what's going on as far as the, so this kind of goes along with the um. The rate of housing development that we were looking at, uh but it's this is just for Lake Forest Park and it's just. Broken down by type of unit and by year. So these are permits that were pulled for housing construction. Uh since over the past twenty years. Um and, you know, you can see that here we have the two thousand eight recession, so. Uh housing and since then it's picked up again, uh and there's a brief period of time of some more um multi-family construction. Uh but for the most part, it's it's been single-family construction and, you know, a modest amount, you know, ten, five, ten units a year. Price or minus, pretty consistent, um except for this little sort of peak in uh some. Twoplexes, triplexes, um a couple apartment buildings here. And one of these actually might have been.
Part of the southern gateway.
Exactly. I mean, I think it's telling me that over the last thirty years, really just four years, three years where. You're seeing sort of more dense multi-family development, um but then fell off over the last three years.
And that was a result of specific zoning changes in that specific area.
Right.
That's sort of got built mostly out and now we're another one.
Yeah.
Which of these colors would indicate uh middle housing? So accessory dwelling units, backyard cottages. Cause surely we've had construction of those in recent years that have been permitted.
There has been a bit. I think there were.
I mean, it's a number, it it can range anywhere from zero to two, three.
A year for about the past ten years. I think we had one year where we had four.
Uh that's kind of the average.
So that's not currently.
That's not.
Um it's lost in the.
We could try to single that out. I mean, this this had they this uh census data that doesn't split it up by ADU, but build it provides with that, so we can have take those. Disaggregate those in here. But the three and fourplexes here, you know, well, maybe these are the townhomes uh or the park, I'm not sure, and it's like gave either. Some ownership apartments, the.
Just a side question.
Yeah.
For the city, um since we updated the ADU code, have we seen an increased interest?
I'm trying to pull up the email that I sent.
Yes, we have, David. Possibility, you know, what does it look like? How can I fit it? Uh how big can it go? Even people that want to. Uh, you know. Downsizing go into it themselves and then then out there.
When was the EU? Uh, okay, sales prices. So um this is the median sales price in the back. It's kind of choppy, so I. I showed a six-month average so we can see a little more clearly what's going on. Uh although one thing you definitely see that's going on is there's a lot of variation in sales. Um especially since the pandemic, but overall, you've got a pretty steady increase from like around one thousand to about one point one. About like one point oh five million um year with that. And this is something we've seen a lot of places, you know, sort of a quick rise post-COVID. Followed by like a little bit of mitigation of prices the past year. So uh we've seen that a lot of places around here, around the Peterstown region in general.
Didn't you say it's gradually increasing in two thousand twenty-three?
It is increasing now again, yeah, uh throughout the year here, but um. Uh there is a bit of a cooling of the market.
Nationally, right.
Real quick back to the eighty units, um we have a spike of four in twenty twenty. We had a lot of spike in twenty twenty during COVID. Reinvested into what they have and then a drop off in twenty-one adoption of the code. We have four in twenty twenty-two, one is complete. Rest are still being built and we just have one so far this year. So it apps and flows.
Does that, does that include ADUs that are built as part of new construction? I I I would recall. A couple of new houses going up that had ADUs built in them. Does that get recognized in that?
I don't, I don't think this report recognizes that. This is just strictly that applying for an ADU or an ADU. Men in existing home.
I wonder if those are just show up as two, as a two-unit on a lot together and show that a duplex somewhere in some dataset.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. In both cases, they were new construction, and so I just wondered if we designate that with our permits to note that that new construction has an ADU as part of the.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'd have to ask that question. I don't know.
We can definitely sort of look into all the data that the city has available and include that in this, incorporate that better into this.
You know, my my sense is that it it really contributes to negligible amounts. It looks legit that I'm getting.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah, anyways. But we we've opened up, I think with the with the exercise that we went through and to amend the code, it allows. Kind of more uh opportunities for people to definitely, um and that was the the spirit of what.
And please have been that because I think we'll come back to that.
Yeah, and and as well, if it's only been a year, it's hard to to see a trend, you know, maybe you get three this year, but maybe you ten next year, who knows, you know, so.
Uh or how can we? Closing.
Yeah, absolutely.
One updating the ADU regulations, this again, part of of this and part of the requirements.
Um, okay. So. Okay, here's a comparison of housing price and income. This shows uh. The in, this is, this is a percent change here since twenty ten, so it's not absolute numbers. It just shows how much things have changed since the baseline here in twenty ten. Income is shown in yellow, so incomes were pretty stable or stagnant, however you want to look at it. Started to rise a lot, um you know, in the past five or so years. Um then we have home price here in blue. So interestingly, home prices. Uh we're still probably coming down a little bit from the two thousand eight recession, starting to climb again here. Uh and then as we saw before, a a higher spike since pandemic. Um and then this is uh the census reported rent. Pretty straight line up. Um and census reported rent is. Usually a bit of an under count as far as uh uh the actual number goes. So if you look at sort of other. Commercial real estate databases and sources of rent, the number will be generally a bit higher than the census reported rent, but the trend is. Pretty accurate as far as um this kind of percentage change. So anyway, what we see is, you know, there's not a huge divergence between these three lines. Uh housing prices and rents and incomes are all increasing, but especially recently, uh there's there's been a more spike in housing price. And a less of an increase in incomes. Uh so that's obviously concerning for housing affordability. The gap between these is sort of represents. Yes, a lack of.
And this, this is the trend also being throughout the region and more extremely.
And throughout the country.
Well, yes. So this is.
Ever, um have you ever looked at that with uh against interest rates? A lot of folks locked in low interest rates and are. Hesitant to real relocate uh because of locking into a higher interest rate law. Is there a? Has that, is that a trend that you've ever seen that these kinds of numbers are even tracked?
That's an interesting question. Um it is not something that we typically look at in these sort of um housing assessments. But something we can look into.
Yeah, I think I think we'd be.
Interesting to see if there's something there.
Yeah, the affordability, this thing we're going to talk about in a second here is, you know, fact is in the industry, so. So the sort of gap between uh in what a household earns and what they can afford obviously goes up when the industry goes up. So we look usually use industries more to look at this gap. So we look usually use industries more to look at this gap rather than over time, but it would be interesting to look at it. Uh so, well, we can start with this one um on the right since we were talking about it. Um there is a substantial gap between what the median household could afford and the median sales price. So I wanna preface this by saying that uh the reason why you're showing a lot of different income levels here is because. Uh there are, you know, more than, the the median income is not the only income of households in Lake Forest Park, it's just the average. Uh it's, it's useful to look at things, but it's also important to look at, you know, a variety of income levels and a variety of housing prices. So you, so you can make some sort of comparisons across, you know, what, what diversity of uh residents are earning and what all the different housing units cost. So that's why we we show this, a bunch of these different bars here at different income levels. So these show income is in green, two thousand dollars, hundred thousand, et cetera, and the house, house price that would be affordable to that. Uh so that household is in blue, and this is calculated, you know, using um. Uh that thirty percent threshold of cost burden and current interest rates and assuming a thirty-year mortgage and. Uh current property tax rates and uh various other sort of small costs, so that was in a lot of things. Uh but the, the sort of bottom line is here in the box, a household earning two hundred fifty thousand dollars, for example. Um could not afford the median Lake Forest Park sales price of one point oh two million, even though they're earning a hundred thousand dollars. More than the median household income. So this gap is pretty big. The median household income here is hundred fifty thousand dollars. And uh that household could, you know, afford a house worth five hundred seventy thousand dollars. But you know, the median sales price is twice that, so you can kind of frame it in different ways, but the, the message is mostly obvious. And then.
Andrew, is, can I just, I, a quick question, would, would it be a safe assumption then to sort of suggest that? What this says is that many people who live in Lake Forest Park. Perhaps are longer term residents and they're, if, if they were to try to buy. They wouldn't be able to buy in today, but because they're already in the differential.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely, uh.
Which then matches that older, you know, the age data that you showed earlier. That's interesting.
Yeah, it's definitely one of the things that it's saying, it's showing, and, and, and I think also you could, you could say that it's showing that, you know. People who would want to come here, move here and buy a house now would have to be. People who are earning way more than the average household is earning now, so that, that, you know, signals something about, about housing price too. But I wanted to contrast it or sort of compare it here on the left with different housing types. I looked at um house, houses, housing units. Sorry, ownership housing units which have been sold in the past year and the price, not built but sold in the past year. Uh and uh at the price that, at which those units were sold. And the type of unit, so condos and townhomes which are sold in the past year. You know, are obviously selling for considerably less than single family homes and obviously you have really expensive single family homes. But most of them are clustered here around a million dollars, which is, you know, clustered around the median sales price. But I think what's interesting is that if you look here at the median household income, hundred fifty thousand dollars, that household could. Could afford without becoming cost burdens, you know, to pay five seventy for a home. And the, and the units which are selling for that price range are overwhelmingly not single family homes. Uh so. That's another thing it's talking, you know, um. So there's a lot of stories you can tell with this, but I think these, these complement each other or.
I think this was really helpful.
Okay, so um one of the requirements of housing needs assessments uh from Department of Commerce is that it does look a little bit at. Uh the economy and the job housing balance. So this shows your employment sectors, I mean, obviously, uh there's, it's not a. Employment heavy community like Forest Park, uh most of your jobs are in service industries. Uh and I also, the, the number of jobs in the city has been pretty steady uh over the past. Few years, let's see here, it's been a little bit of an uptick since the pandemic, so especially in service and retail and construction. The job to housing ratio here is point three four. Um that's very low, obviously, uh compared to the countywide average of this one point three four.
And that is exactly a ratio of.
Jobs, jobs to.
Jobs.
Jobs to housing.
In our community and housing units and it's just that, okay.
Quick question, how do these data deal with, say, people like me who work for a public agency based in Seattle? If I were full-time people.
That is a million dollar question.
It's a tricky thing to calculate, it's not captured in most official data. Your job would be counted in Seattle. Um where your employer is based. Um but actually something that is not included in this, but it's an analysis that we've been performing or sort of have the ability to do. Based on recent research, there's, you know, you can sort of assess out on an average day, what percentage of. Workers are working from home in your, you know, based on looking at at the industry mix and sort of national and regional averages. Percentages of people that work from home with those industries, so that, that is something that could be, uh we can incorporate into this and then. Alter that ratio somewhat. But not captured into the official.
And I think that, that um work from home consideration has. Different implications depending on the reason. So if you're looking at, you know, sort of tax, tax or municipal revenue side of things, the job is in Seattle and. You know, it's in Seattle. If you're looking at um. Uh transportation impacts, for example, well, that is different, because now, you know, when you go to lunch, you're driving around here instead of there, for example, or commuting. So it, it kind of depends on the reason for that, and sometimes we look at that in terms of population and jobs targets or this kind of ratio analysis. But sometimes we look at that in terms of, you know, transportation demand modeling and uh so.
Or and the resale as well.
Yeah.
Which will, yeah. So I guess really what we're talking about is this. In some ways you can think about these as jobs provided by this geography, because if I move to shoreline. That doesn't leave an open job at all. No, I, I just go and start.
Right, this is jobs in the city.
Yeah, jobs, yeah. Uh employers base.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the employee, the uh jobs worked by residents of Lake Forest Park is.
I saw that.
Is next, yeah, so.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
The, the um this need, right, that there are requirements at a state level about increasing. Uh sort of uh jobs in, in a person's community. The, is the motivation of that to have jobs closer to home or is it to produce? A revenue base for the city, like I was thinking. Work from home doesn't yield any new taxes for the city, but a home business would yield taxes. For the city, I guess, what's, what's the, what's behind this uh interest in workforce? For Lake Forest Park?
Yeah, so. Well, good. I think my, I mean, maybe, well, uh one um. Uh I think the goal of vision twenty fifty that from PSRC is from, I mean, because it's regional transportation is, is. Um is to reduce uh.
Even the ratio.
Yeah, even the ratio to, to reduce commuting or reduce the, the need for people to be at very long distances to work. Uh I mean, aside from carbon emissions and um. And to transit planning and transit planning, so I, on the PSRC side, I think they, you know, one of, that's the reason why. That particular agency has that goal incorporated into their accounting is, is primarily transportation based, but I think there is an economic development for the side.
Yeah, well, the jobs to housing ratio, you know, a ratio of one is sort of considered ideal, so then you have sort of a match jobs to housing and. Yeah, to, to counter all of these conditions that they have just raised. Um but your question of what types of jobs, the allocations that are headed out in the county by planning policies. Don't indicate what types of jobs those should be. It's worth taking from a regional standpoint, what is the, the job growth likely to be? Within your individual community. Um but your question about, well, say if Lake Forest Park wanted to try and promote. Uh businesses, you know, from home, then that would be more of an economic development strategy than policies that could be adopted and reconfined as a plan. Uh something that the city itself could, can, would want to promote, um so they did. Have some revenue, uh that's close to this uh other forms of, of jobs or the commuters coming into the city.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot.
I ratio, I'm thinking about like. What, which, I mean, I'm not saying what's the exact number to link with, but it's like three, is it like three? I know that Boffel actually has, I think, one of the higher ratios, yeah, like one point six four.
I think that's.
Very high, yeah, that's, that's relatively high.
Which is in the like last five years. Yeah, but I don't know, like Auburn, I think it's pretty high, they did a lot of definitely employment down there.
I'm trying to.
I remember.
Yeah, we have actually the numbers, but the countywide.
The countywide is one point three.
Three, four, right, so.
Is, is this ratio correlated with zoning at all? And like, I guess, then like the square footage of um of commercial, for example. I mean, cause we'll never get.
Sure.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and it is, um this is sort of a, you know, a question that is discussed a lot, you. Zoning, you can't really zone for jobs in the same way that you can zone, zone for housing. You can in terms of what's permitted and allowed by rights, but um the housing market as it is right now is, is driving housing growth. Whereas the job market is much harder to sort of predict and steer, it's much more, more of a strategic thing. It's from a zoning code standpoint, allowing different forms of commercial developments. Um I'll let, you know, allowing a, a larger square footage uh might promote certain types of employers to come and locate in your community. Um but I think maybe more to your point, you're asking land availability for commercial developments in Lake Forest Park, it's relatively limited. So this ratio is probably, you're unlikely to see this come closer to one, um and that's not. Necessarily a negative thing.
No, it's just a characteristic of this thing, that's correct, yeah, no, but I, yeah, I appreciate it from that standpoint.
Well, I also think that, you know, the, the um, the requirements are what the state wants to see from your comprehensive plan as far as, you know, and any prescriptive stuff. It for the jobs housing ratio is, is much more general than, you know, the, the new housing requirements by income band, for example. You know, they say like uh consider your employment locations or consider your jobs housing ratio, so uh you know, it's. Well, there may be this platonic ideal of it being one, and it's not obviously universally applicable by every community.
Uh cause I was curious, what is our. Uh makeup of our external, you know, where, where our community is being employed.
Right.
So like, as far as like the makeup of, of what sectors, cause if those are out of alignment, it's obviously we can see that it's gonna be really hard to bring them in. We can't bring a university into this community, so, so just another sort of aspect of data that might be interesting to compare.
Yeah.
I just noticed Tracy behind you.
Sorry, but okay, I just to add on to Housewoman Riddle's comment, uh we're seeing this kind of a flawed metric. And as much as your comment was very well taken, I've worked two days a week at my college and the other two days I've worked for college. How do you count leave then, right? So I think after the pandemic, we're gonna have to come up with a much better metric.
Absolutely.
Actually be able to think policy based of this, cause right now, the policy that I'm going towards, which I think are administrated, oh, well, love. Is that all of us who work from home should get distance licenses.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be noted that through conversations with PSRC and Congress, that work from home estimates can be incorporated into sort of job targets. So it is, though it is not entirely an official data set, yeah, it is something that is, you know, this, this is here to stay, it's something that. Um should be counted towards your overall. Job and employment count.
I think this data point is perfect to the next conversation, to the next slide.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Just to, to put a, a pin on the, on to the point around where are people commuting and what industries and stuff. That is something that certainly is part of the economic, of all our economic vitality elements of the plan will be incorporated. Not incorporated or included in this analysis, but it's something that we typically do in looking at broader employment base in the city.
Yeah, and, and, and to that point, the, I think the, the reason why we had that in here was sort of, as you said, uh that was clearly with this. To, to show that, um you know, these, these people that are working in Lake Forest Park. And, and the average income that these sectors that we've just been looking at, you know, earn are, are. Our incomes that wouldn't be able to um. Uh afford to live here without becoming cost burden for the most part, uh so you have, you know, you have your retailer or waiter, you know, earning something like forty, forty-five thousand. Dollars a year, they would have to spend more than half their income on rent, which is the higher figure here, in order to afford the average unit in Lake Forest Park. So from the housing, so you know, from the housing needs side of things rather than the economic development lens, which we've just been talking about. This is sort of the implication of uh of, of looking at the people that work here and uh and the sort of. The most inability to. Oh, yes, 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 that is, yes. And here is uh some of that commuting data, the beginning of it, and yeah, looking into economic development down the line, we can do more analysis of this, but. Uh again, I don't think it's a surprise, you know, most people commute out, as we've seen, there's not a lot of them here. Uh the census is showing one hundred and six people that were working. Very small number. Um and I, I also just wanted to look at, you know, where, where are these jobs that are from this data set? This is a census data set that's also has geographic locations of the jobs. Um by census block, and this is where, you know, where it's showing them, so not surprised, right, you've got. The local one oh five. One oh four, sorry. Right, there's one oh four right here, oh yeah. And uh, okay, it sounds okay. Hey, it was good, it was all the mushrooms, they made my brain go.
It seems like, it seems like gross undercount, just anecdotally, I think if you're in the room, we're hearing that a couple. All the full time for years.
Yeah.
Hundred and six seems far too low. I know a number of my neighbors work from all the full time.
Yeah, exactly, and this is, this is based on the, the physical like office location of the employer, so. The employer's in another city, yeah, so this is, this is exactly the type of data set which the census, you know, is eventually gonna have to, to sort out. The deal is working from, or PSRC.
To the council member's point, yeah, that. These metrics, which have sort of been the tried and true metric of employment um by the census for years, it's now maybe no longer accurate.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, definitely. So. This is sort of the, you know, the point here, all of this points to some gas log we talked about, um aging populations. So, so as we have talked about before, you know, there, there's needs for smaller units, also physically acceptable units in, in some cases. And that goes along with the um, you know, disabilities, the, well, challenges for renter households. Uh we saw that rental households are earning a lot less than homeowners, uh facing high rates of cost burden. Uh they're more racially and ethnically diverse, uh they're generally smaller households. Um and so, you know, the renter households are, are experiencing different and more compounding sort of challenges, which. Challenges for workers, so that's what we were just looking at, um you know, the. The service sector here is employing people who uh likely don't make enough to come and be living in the community. Uh like housing size options, we talked about that for a while too, uh there's, there's definitely, you know. Potential lack of smaller units and, and that can uh hamper affordability or choice of order and order. Uh limited land availability, um you know, ninety-six percent of Lake Forest Park is zoned for single family housing. And uh there's not a lot of vacant land. Um this, so, you know, that's, that's obviously uh just uh a, a characteristic of the city. And there's also a lot of critical areas, slopes and all these other things which are unique to the, to the landscape here, so. Uh that's definitely a constraint that, you know, some other places that, you know, wanna accommodate more residents or whatever they have. Opting to annex and things, so that's not, that's not the case here, so there's, that sort of changes the equation of what you do. Higher ship housing prices, that pretty much speaks for itself. Um and spatial equity considerations, so, you know, I remember by putting this on here is just thinking about those various maps of things and, and where things are and aren't clustered. Let me see, you have multifamily housing uh in areas with generally more diverse populations and lower incomes. Um so, you know, second, that's something that can signal issues if, if there's clusters of lower residents or. You know, areas of less opportunity to. So those, those are the big, sort of big picture gas that we wanted to talk about. Uh there, we have a couple slides uh about next steps and things, as I mentioned, part two coming up, but I'm happy to pass on this question here or.
Yeah, maybe before moving on to what comes next.
So comment about this side, this gaps analysis or whatever we wanna call it.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I really appreciate this, uh I, I'm a little, so, okay, so work with me, okay. So I would be more comfortable without saying. You know, these are the conclusions of your data, because I'm not, I I I don't quite know where your gaps are yet, because I want to compare that with. Where we're at and what the state law is requiring, right? And then also, what is it that we want, right? So there's our, there's what we got to meet, the 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 requirements of the state law. But then there's also what we want. That what's our vision for the housing, you know, situation in Lake Forest Park, so that we can actually identify the gaps based on this video. Does that make sense?
Totally.
So I, you know, I I I don't, I'm not. I'm not upset with.
Oh, yeah.
Gaps, but I'm just, I think I'd be more comfortable with calling these conclusions, and now we have the work to do.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And to your point about the legislative requirements and sort of part of the length as the analysis is looking at specific. Needs by income band, right? Um, so that sort of speaks more to specific gaps or needs, um, and that's part of that analysis, the one conducting.
And also, speaking of requirements, um, the, all the, I'm not trying to, uh, you know, slough off responsibility for using that term, but. All the the titles of all the sections need to reference from the uh G M A checklist, so the checklist says at the end, you gotta identify the gaps. So that's why we call it gaps, but yeah, I I I totally agree, it's it. It's more like, what is the data, what are the larger pictures that they is telling us, like you said?
And also to speak to your point, or what are what are our goals, what's the vision, that's really a proximal context, what it's all about, right? So this is, this is data to help make those decisions and have those conversations, and the legislative requirements are. Part of it, but then beyond, you know, these sort of, uh, this data analysis. Yeah, what do we, what do we want to say if the next step for Lake Forest Park, I mean, the housing, that's sort of the big. Aside from the next stage of length capacity analysis, that's the next step, but really, you know, this work is having those conversations.
Right, and and how it informs the the, you know. The nonappendix, the goals and policies, like.
Right, the actual house my element.
Yeah, so. That's what I meant by nonappendix.
I'm gonna throw it out there again, though, yeah. I I I just wanted to say that when I look at the the current conflict that we have, I I I feel that it really, I I identify with it, I like it a lot, I think it's a good document. And, uh, you know, for me in this process, you know, I I don't want to go and and change the whole thing, I really just, you know, I think it makes sense to fill in the gaps or fill in the blank. But but really just see where we can bring it to more modern, you know, more modern current times that does reflect legislation and. Uh, but personally, I I just feel that that's a good conflict, and I think it it really is a good working document, and. So if you would agree, but.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Well, this is a big piece that will.
Correct, yeah, yeah, it's correct, yeah, yeah, I I just didn't want it to trick, you know, for us to go off the rails to think that we're recreating this document. Now, but I do appreciate, you know, the information and how we can. Probably update the the conflict, so.
Yeah, it is an update, it says it on there.
Absolutely, yeah, and this is all, I mean, food for thought.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I'm gonna be like, shoot out.
Um, yeah, thank you very much for the uh, of course, very thorough, and uh, you know, I have the same comment about the gaps, and I'm wondering, you've read the two thousand fifteen update. Are there any surprises from your list compared to the two thousand fifteen?
Are you asking those, count the uh?
The art of our consultants here.
I checked, ask you guys too.
I would say generally. No, I mean, I think that, um. These are are not major surprises to us, um, just sort of a update of where we stand today.
Yeah, and a lot of these are are regional trends that we've been seeing, you know, that have changed since then all over the view of town, you know. Obviously, housing cost increases, affordability challenges, these things are. Are pretty universal at this point in the area, and every.
So I think if anything to make your change exactly is just that. Lake Forest Park as sort of everywhere in the region has just become less affordable than it was. A minute or so.
And I think it validates what we've been doing at the council level, it's adopting and trying to chip away at that. Lack of affordability, even that's what everybody's looking at, hence the reason we now have bans and we can't meet for that affordability, making sure it's just on. It's just catch all, okay, we have housing, we have a multifamily tax exemption. Drive that power really really looking. So I think hopefully that is the right step to.
One thing that I would. Perhaps in the uh limited land availability is that we also have other code that might get in the. Might cause a barrier such as our tree code within our, there are uh impending. Are growing concern for the environment, you know, how's that going to impact some of the land availability, right? I don't know how those factors fit into that, what we will look at being the gap, so. You know, so.
Well, there is, and I think we have a slide about this, not necessarily specific to maybe environmental constraints, but um. Part of the the new legislation called addictive provisions, is when you're looking at. Your uh, your capacity to meet these different housing needs that in various income levels. If it's identified that there is a gap, that you're not able to meet that that need. Then you sort of, the next step is looking through your your existing regulations and sort of identifying are there barriers that exist, are there things that can be done to. Promote these types of housing, um, and that's where we'd be looking at. Not to say that you have to then repeal, say, your, you know, your treatment. Uh, but you have to, we have to note what those barriers are and what action the city may be doing to address.
So, um, I also noticed that there's a lot of Airbnb going on around in Lake Forest Park, and so I don't think that. Those people are just using it uh to make an income, not necessarily renting out to other. Renter long term, and so I don't know how that equates in, you know, instead of. Having the A or A U be like a winter for them moving into themselves, they're they're creating an income for themselves, so. You know, so that doesn't count towards the population either. We talked.
Yes, they did. Data on, you know, what percentage of households are not occupied.
Yeah.
Rent or.
Yeah, but I think there are one of the questions that came up was just, are there any existing sort of requirements or restrictions around short-term rentals that like. That there are not currently, right, so, um, requirements around owner occupancy, um, you know, basically not. Being able to meet absentee landowner and just renting out your house or multiple rooms, not brutal Airbnb restricting that. Often takes care of a lot or a lot of the instances of. Potential housing units can take off the market.
Yeah, and we do have a little bit of an issue now, though, with this new state legislation, which. Our current ordinance says that if you have an A U, one of they are, one of the units has to be owned by state legislations it that way, and so that's no longer required at the state level, so. Right. That guy takes away that tool, we do license them as businesses when we find them. Not the easiest to find. I mean, it's, it's right to your point, it. It has the potential of taking an affordable housing unit off the market and that otherwise could be sold or rented.
Yeah, I did have, I wanted to mention to your point, uh, uh, that. There's an, there's a, a few blogs, there's a later slide somewhere, uh, there's nothing more slides, I'm worried. Um, of things we talked about last time that we're gonna work more on for the next time we come to to talk to you guys, and one of them is looking at. So we'll we'll get some data on what we can find, number of unoccupied or. Rental unit units and and, um, you know, maybe some other examples and strategies, yeah, around these things, the rental registration. These are things that we talked about at the last, uh, last time we were here with you, that we, um, are gonna continue to work on.
There was a change in regulations, I believe it was in New York, that's trying to address the Airbnb situation, where it had to be owner occupied if it's just short term. But it does not have to be owner occupied for a long term rental, I'm not sure how that's fleshing out and whether how that would go with our state law, because the short term rental isn't. A housing unit, it's a hotel unit, so maybe it, but it'd be interesting to see if, oh, well, that's working in other jurisdictions, and then, of course, how to say. But heads for current laws.
I can tell you, it's not working well in most jurisdictions where it's happening, it's either running into, um. Court rulings that say you can't make these requirements of owner occupancy. Uh, San Diego went through this exercise of a really, really complicated, you know, kind of what you were just saying that. And they exempted certain neighborhoods have different rules because they were like the tourist top beds that have always been that way. But it gets really, really complicated, and as I shared last time, I have an Airbnb, and the first thing I did when we started to do it is I called the city, I said, do I need, do I need a license, anything? Nope. Okay, let me know if I do, and 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 honestly, I think. Data gathering could start with just requiring license, you don't even have to start taxing people to register, just. We're trying to learn, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's, I don't, I mean, I would sign up right away. Like, sure. I mean, it's kind, it's it's a weird data gap to have, um, that we have these, and it affects, it does affect our housing. A lot of people have units like mine, which actually couldn't be a. Full-time rental, it has like a kitchenette, you know, it doesn't have like, doesn't have what you need to to real housing unit. I have friends, other friends in L P who have fully kind of, they're full-on A D U type setups. And we don't know how many, because we don't actually.
That's.
Another question.
Yeah.
The slide shared, but not one that we looked at here, there was in the packet, slide thirty-four. On housing allocation.
Yes, that is.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly, so if I'm.
Is that this one?
Exactly, so does this mean that based on the allocation that's been given to us in Lake Forest Park under applicable law? We already have enough capacity to meet the allocation, or is there something more we need to do, because I think. I think that's what Commissioner Bodie had mentioned in one of the prior meetings.
Yes, correct, so based on, um, our discussion last time, I've sort of remade this in a way that that shows exactly what you're saying, uh, hopefully more clearly. So the the current number of housing units is here, and the required, uh, you know, you know. A growth is eight hundred seventy more by twenty forty-four, which equals this line sixty-four sixteen, the. The buildable lands report shows a capacity of seventy-three forty-three, which does exceed. Um, this allocation, so that that means, yes, correct, that you don't have to like rezone anything to meet the capacity.
And it should be so that I kind of see it based on twenty thirty-five, the horizon, so even. Looking at nine years sooner than the planning of this conflict, um, there is adequate capacity to meet that.
But the 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 sort of, um, caveat, I guess, is that we are gonna be looking at capacity. Uh, to twenty forty-four as part of this conflict, too, so this is like the last buildable lands mentioned twenty thirty-five, as David just said. So we're gonna be looking at what the capacity of your vacant redevelopment land would be through twenty forty-four, which we obviously assume is gonna be higher than that.
Well, and I mean, thi- this is oversimplifying it, because as was mentioned, part of this like capacity analysis also has to look at capacity for various income bands as well. So it could be that gross level, citywide level, yes, there's plenty of capacity, just some of that. Uh, bigger, but then when you look at the different housing types, basically, it, then that's a piece of analysis we haven't yet done, yeah, that's what, uh, where it might be some. Other issues there.
Do you have a map that shows sort of the parcel? Areas where this potential building could occur, I would look at that.
So the the global ends report is is public document, um, we we do, I don't believe we have a map in this particular, in this presentation. Um, but that's what this capacity analysis is based on, and.
Buildable land reports.
Uh, King County available, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure how good the map is, but but I, but in the, in the, in the next. The next time we come back with our group housing, um, we are gonna be talking a lot more about this, and so we will definitely have maps read then, so. Um, where where, and and one of the things we've been starting to look at is, um. Things like environmental constraints and where where we think things would be more likely or less likely to occur, and we'll probably see a lot of you on that, too, so. We will have, uh, all that in the next.
In in the next steps, yeah, which is, um, say, I mean, we've already sort of started to move into the. The future looking slides, I don't know if there are further comments or discussion around. We previously had the gaps analysis or considerations, um, we can get into sort of what those next steps are, um, as well.
To get ready, okay, yeah, cool, so. Uh, this is actually the first one, so perfect timing, um. So, yeah, we're gonna be looking at targets, as I just mentioned, we're gonna be updating the capacity number for housing units and, uh. And we will come back to you with. New numbers and maps, same for employment targets, um, five hundred fifty new jobs was the target, again, the twenty forty. Sorry, I again forgot to update this, oh my God, that's so embarrassing, sorry. It's gonna do it right now. Okay, there we go, um, the twenty thirty-five capacity shows, uh, twenty-three seventy-four, which is in excess of the target, so. So the the bill of the lands is uh also showing that there's enough capacity for to to reach your jobs target. Um, although, again, the job is much more, and these jobs targets, is this is the the place where we're gonna look at, not just. You know, this is based on, um, uh, square footage of commercial development, right, like where you could put physical job. Um, but, but, you know, we also gonna look at, uh, what kind of job, um. Allocating some portion of work from home to this, um, target, et cetera.
Um, so I was part of plan officially with the last, uh, conflict, oh yeah, years ago, and and the one thing that struck me is when we had the map of, uh, developable land.
Yeah.
The majority of those were in critical areas, steep slopes. And we do have a reasonable use exemption, as every city must have, to allow sub-developer on those lands, but they are the least desirable, and they have the most. The greatest impact to our tree canopy and our critical areas. Why they haven't been built on yet, so it would be interesting when that analysis comes through, there's some way to identify those highly impacted. Lots that are much. We we may want to not encourage development on them because of their environmental impacts to our community. But anyway, I just don't know how you would go about that in your in your mapping, but something we faced as a concern back then.
Yeah, yeah, what I was gonna say, it's just, when you look, yeah, if you look at the parcel level map, and. Look a little bit scary at first, because especially here in Lake Forest Park, it shows a ton of parcels, but then when you actually dig into the data. It's a small fraction of a percent of the acreage of that parcel that is potentially redevelopable, so it's, you can do exactly what you're just saying there, um, so the. While it is is identified or categorized as redevelopable within the land support. The actual number of those parcels and amount of acreage that is actually redevelopable is quite small.
Yeah, and one thing I started to do when I was starting, when I opened up that file and saw that was exactly what you said, it's it's just the. First filter out things where, say, you have a, you know, uh, eight thousand square foot lot, and, you know, like. Ten square feet were identified as redevelopable, because I'm asking, so I just figured, well, it's like, if there's like. One to ten percent or less of a lot is considered redevelopable, we should take those out, because obviously, the likelihood of somebody putting, you know, some something tiny in this. Little point of the, that's not affected by wellness or whatever, is ridiculous, so, um, we're definitely gonna. Just dial those back, and and then I think also that's a great point, one one thing we should go on the list of things to do is to sort of. In addition to looking at, uh. You know, because if you take the total amount of land that you, that the the lands that you could build on, you know, we would never assume that all of that would be built out by twenty forty-four. So, you know, the way in which we would prorate how much of it may be developable, um, often is is uh. Based on like the what the market has been doing here or nearby, um, based on things like new legislation, allowing potentially more A D Us or whatever, but also, I think here we should add a sort of. Maybe an environmental factor to that, too, so that these more encumbered parcels are gonna be less likely to redevelop.
Something that can help us tell the story about why we pick the policies that we do, are, you know, increasing development over here, but because we're saving, you know, saving the. Environmental sort of impacts over here, for us to be able to have data to be able to make those policy decisions on, I think would be really critical, I think. Uh, land planning commissioners would agree, uh, those sorts of pieces of information help us make our decisions.
Absolutely.
I think I I. Oh, sorry.
No, I feel like I've seen something like that where they did overlay the critical areas map over the.
Yeah, I had one somewhere, uh, well, I just have the critical areas map here, uh, but, you know, so that you can identify all the parcels. I mean, we can, we can analyze them separately, the ones that are within the various.
What struck me about that was, I think a lot of the ups, the the so-called available, um, you know, units or or developable units are really, uh. The the large lot sizes that Lake Forest Park has, or, uh. So for our, um, for a residential zone of seventy-two hundred square feet per lot, you've got lots that are, you know, twenty-four thousand square feet, so they're. You know, that's that's where that count was coming in, so. You know, that's that's where that count was coming in. So, you know, uh.
Again, a lot of those go back towards sort of the creek.
So, yeah, when you looked at, yeah, some of those, yeah, the large lot sizes.
This is uh, are we talking about uh? Uh land that also has current housing structures or something?
Yeah, that's why.
Well, there's two, so there's two um, there's two types, right? There's vacant parcels and there's redevelopable parcels. And. So, you know, these ones, the bill of lands identifies, you know, parcels where they think you may be able to. Add something to it, like partially used, you know, an ADU on it, or ones where uh the. Land value is considerably higher than the building value. So it would be more likely to take a building down. Uh so all of those exist, it's captured. And so and they're treated differently in in how how likely we think they are to occur. So we would consider obviously a vacant parcel will be, you know, some percentage more likely than a parcel that has a house on it. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Hey, I just, I think it bears repeating a conversation we had last time, which is that. You know, I I I I think I speak for all of us when um I say that we're really interested in how we. How we think about this work and that it isn't just how dense can we get in Lake Forest Park? But instead, how can we solve the challenges that that we have? And and one thing we know, we we've seen in the data tonight is. Um a diversity of housing. And so I'm I'm hopeful in the land capacity. It's not just. Development for development's sake, but actually development for achieving that or or making progress on the affordability. Components on entry-level housing, on downsizing options, um housing that's more accessible for those with disabilities. Um so, you know, really thinking about in this land capacity analysis. The the I I think about a lot of the very large lots that are eligible for subdivision in our community. And how could we think about targeting some of those as being ideal for? Um, you know, maybe uh I've said it before, like Quimper Village, you know, like special projects that. That are are appropriate for those parcels um and actually help us improve. Uh a situation that we find ourselves in now, right? With, you know, less diverse housing. Um and certainly, uh, you know, having an affordability issue. So. I think those things go hand in hand, and I just wanna make sure that we stay focused on that.
I absolutely, yeah, I'm totally. I am very happy you said that. It's very easy to get lost in all the data and especially all of the legislative requirements. Uh that are vigorously handed down and sort of getting away from, okay, what really are our needs, what are our goals? What's the vision for the future? What are some of the the housing types that are out there that might be able to help us meet our goals that aren't just, you know. Some words on a page, looking at unique circumstances and characteristics for the community. Um and I think. It it is very important. You know, one of the things the data does point us to though is that you're looking at recent. Housing that's been built in Lake Forest Park. Again, the only ones that have been relatively affordable are condominiums and townhomes. So they're not seeing new single, single-family homes. Being built that are affordable to most residents that currently live here. Um so, but what types of condominiums? What types of townhomes, maybe what other types of housing, um cottage home development, things like that. Might be more fit within your neighborhoods. And it's not just about trying to fit as many. Units on as much land as possible. Um. You know, what what can we do while still meeting the requirements standard down by the state, but actually meeting the goals and the needs that have been identified in this process? So.
Yeah, and I think, you know. Sorry, go ahead, Nick.
I was just gonna say, I think, you know, in in addition uh to that, that, you know, part of what we need to. You know, be thinking about throughout these conversations is 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 um signaling at a public level. That our interest is in addressing affordability and addressing diversity of housing, which goes hand in hand with that, that. It's not about densifying for the sake of density, uh or. You know, well, we have to be more dense here because we're trying to preserve this critical area over there, like to really stay hyper-focused on. Helping our community feel good and excited about the fact that any changes to, you know, to to comply with state law. And the ways in which we execute it here really are targeted at um addressing those two. Two issues, because I think it's something folks can appreciate and um understand as a motivation versus. You know, trying to create a more favorable environment for developers, you know, uh that are coming through our community, you know, strictly to make money. Not to necessarily purport, provide community.
Who would service this conversation then? Next steps, right? Uh so we have this data, right? So I. Where where does, when do we bring the public, sorry, the community into this? So that we can add the anecdotal stories to. Is, you know, we all have stories about our our situations living in Lake Forest Park, right? It's that those stories represent, represent states. So how do we bring and when do we bring everything?
So um uh our next meeting, we're gonna be talking more about the public engagement plan. And um yeah, the different uh, you know, the different events that we have in our support, how we can all work together to really leverage. Our our efforts uh to get as much engagement as possible. And we'll talk more about what the schedule for that looks like. I would like to initiate our first uh public engagement effort, which is gonna be um sharing some information about what the what the comp plan. Project is, what the purpose of it is, why it's important to be every day a person that lives in. Please in Lake Forest Park. Um so we'll uh hoping to do that uh this fall. Before we get too far. Just to as a as a stretch. But we'll talk a little bit more about goals. We'll talk about messaging. Uh Matt, you never forgot about that. Um and uh we're also gonna talk about uh framing some of this information and some of the state requirements. Because it's, we're not gonna take it as a given. It's gonna be broadly exciting to everyone. It can be, um, you know, it it's sounds like a pretty dramatic change, uh regardless of what the reality of the thing it sounds like.
And then and then the uh landing capacity analysis that will be like, what do you think about that line? So with the subsequent meeting.
Yeah, yeah, all.
What is it now? So November, yeah, I know them.
Before Thanksgiving.
Yes. When we uh, when we have, uh I was thinking about other, a couple of other um housing need discussions I was working on, we were working on earlier in the year. And um, you know, after we we did also sort of correlate some of the given results with the data, and that was really powerful, I think, and great to. For you guys and council, but also the public with the tea where they end up. So I think in this background section, once we finish land capacity and all these other things and. You know, kind of um put that together, resulting later on in the year, that'll, that can help draw draw it all together in a way.
Yeah, we get the boring things out of the way.
Yes.
Well, I don't think it's boring, but.
Right. All this analysis, including the land capacity, which is, which is important, but it's just, it's things to help you all. Think about your future decisions and goals and the update of your your housing element and comprehensive plan, right? So. Um I guess it probably in the new year is when we really start digging into putting it together.
Putting together.
You know, the goals and policies and strategies to address all of the sort of identified gaps and needs. Um that we've done through this analysis.
There we go. Well. Uh I'll I'll just mention here, and I think that Matt is pointing us now, um, you know, looking at the the things that we often look at when we're we're doing these. Like what kind of buildings are gonna go where? Uh often that's sort of more based on um sometimes like what's been happening and if that were to continue, what would it look like? But in this case, I think to your point, like uh looking at a vision for what might. Fit the best and and business and, you know, in in the community and also sort of seeing where that would would take us as far as the target. So I think there's. There's an intersection between the vision and uh and the targets in a way, which is kind of unique here and and could be fun and interesting to work on too. Uh because, you know. There there's a lot of ways you can slice and dice eight hundred eighty units or whatever that number was, uh eight hundred seventy units. Uh and so, you know, we'll we'll be looking at that. So the other thing is, uh we've been obviously talking about all evening here is stabilization. I just have one slide on each quickly, uh just to. And and most of it we've already covered, but um this is just the the very beginning of uh this income band analysis we've been talking about. So. Um after we finish the land capacity analysis, uh you know, what 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 the HB twelve twenty, there's a, there's like three, three books of a hundred pages each. Telling you how to do this. So I'm not gonna go into a great, you can read the books if you're willing. It's gonna be a five hundred page second, just kidding. But um anyway, the the on a very basic level, the idea is you look at the zoning, you look at the land capacity. You know, and and you correlate that with what income level those new units would serve. And then um. And then you see what's been built and and if there's a barrier to productions, we talked about this earlier, um you know, based on the capacity, based on recent trends. Is the city producing enough housing to meet those targets? And uh what type of housing, like you were just saying, and and how, and if not, then what what? What what would be the actions that could be taken? This just shows your current units in gray. Uh these are broken down. So the the counties, you know, issued this data. Um these are the current units that are serving each income level, thirty percent AMI, fifty percent eighty, hundred, et cetera. Uh and then there's the net new need um at these various income levels in blue on top of these all have. Uh for that D seventy. So um, you know, we're gonna be building this much more and and the way that you show. Capacity for these is not necessarily showing that you're definitively gonna build, you know, one hundred forty units that are definitely gonna be affordable at X Y Z price, but. But just that you show that capacity for units based on the housing prices, like we've seen earlier, different types of housing and how much they cost, uh where they could be built. Uh you show, you know, that you have the that the potential for that to happen this year. So that we will. Be talking about November. Also, we'll be talking about ADUs. We already talked about this a little bit. It's pretty much much more straightforward. Sorry, sorry.
Matty, you still have your hand up or you?
No, sorry, sorry.
Yes, thanks, David, good catch. Eighties, uh the the new law requires, as Phil's already said, a bunch of changes. Uh the occupancy requirement, um. Let's be left it, you have to allow two eighty's on all lots. There's a maximum floor area. Uh you have to allow garage conversions without additional parking requirements. And we don't need to get into a discussion of parking now, but I will just say that there are uh some provisions for studying parking uh in unique situations. Uh both for for ADUs and for middle housing. And uh we're looking into um into that going forward because. You know, we we heard from you before, um and have also seen just running around that, you know, a lot of places might not be suitable for. You know, zero off the party. Um and also ADUs can be restricted in a bunch of areas. So in these critical areas, floodplains, these areas now be um. Uh required to have ADUs. Obviously. Uh and finally, um no housing HB eleven ten, this is a lot more complicated, but as you know, you're gonna be. Part of the vice a lot of duplexes on the single-family lots. In this, in the two eighty use, although after I typed this, I uh got, went down a really involved rabbit hole, which uh you don't even wanna know about, but um. There's a lot of, there's a lot of questions over whether or not the, this is actually true, whether or not two. Two units on a duplex and two eighty's will be required, or if the eighty's will come towards, so we're waiting to hear from Congress. Yeah, that's probably the attorney general I heard yesterday. So so don't touch it, just wait, just wait and see. Uh there is. There is an alternative compliance method, um. If seven, if twenty-five percent of your lots include critical areas or have a higher risk of displacement. Um and we talked about this last time too, in terms of uh concerns over naturally occurring affordable housing being easily redeveloped after this upsetting. Um, you know, then you can, this provision for allowing duplexes on all lots will only be applied to seventy-five percent of lots. So we're we're exploring this to see. If that would make sense given larger critical areas. And uh I'll learn some further comments guidance for the clinic. So we're. All waiting with bated breath for the another, the next hundred page book to come out, telling us uh. Uh, you know, the sort of implementation of this law. Right now, we just kind of have the legislation itself. So uh there's gonna be later on in the year and early next year, there's gonna be a lot more. Clarity on what HB eleven ten will actually require, or you know, more exactly. But this is what we know right now.
Question, which you may not know the answer to. Probably don't. Um speaking of the reasonable use exemption, right now, we have to allow. Reability to a single-family home in our single-family lots. Will duplexes be the minimum state for reasonable use exemption, or will it still be a single unit? I'm assuming because those lots are typically critical area lots that it wouldn't, but it would be nice to know what commerce is thinking about when it comes to that.
Specific guidance given on that.
I doubt there is.
No, but we should actually, you know, we should ask. Yeah, because they're they're slowly answering questions um on their website every month or so, and that would be a really good.
Definitely get that question.
Yeah. Now you raise a hand again.
Yeah, I just wanted to um just do a time check with you all. We have a few other things in our on our agenda, so I just wanted to maybe offer, we could. Toss around a couple more questions and um and then probably need to move on.
Yes, oh, sorry, we put so long. Also, that was the last slide, so.
No, it's hugely important. And I think now we're starting to get into the territory of, you know, like. What's commerce gonna do about our fish growing streams that are near a transit stop? And, you know, so. But probably past the pro productivity of our meeting. Um but all very interesting. Thank you so much for your presentation. Does anybody have any like burning questions you haven't been able to get out just yet? For either David or Andrew or or Christina.
Yeah, uh feel free to follow up with us uh via email. Did you do think of anything that we have a thought about tonight?
Uh huge thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
Yes, yes, it's nice to see you all again. Looking forward to that next time. Yeah.
Okay, um, well, Phil, do you have anything else under old business that you?
That's all the.
Okay. Um what about new business?
I don't have any new business.
Well, no, I was thinking either under new business or reports and announcements. I didn't know if there might be an update on staffing.
Oh, that's good. Update on staffing, um as we are going to continue searching for a community development director. That's the update on the staffing.
Okay.
We have several candidates we're looking at. We have. I don't know, probably almost a dozen applicants for the um assistant planner position. Which I was holding off on filling until we had a director, but we can't continue to hold off. So um. If things don't align, the new director will already have a planning staff when they come on board. Uh but we can't continue to bury Nick. Um we've got some good candidates that are qualified that we don't wanna pass on in just waiting for a qualified director. So um. That's where we stand with staffing today. We talked about all the other departments that are under staff right now.
Okay, thank you. Um thank you for that. All right, any, anything else, any other reports or announcements that you guys might have, Nick?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Uh do we have any additional citizen comments? Sarah, thanks for sticking with us. Um, all right, and if there are others in the room, thank you. Um. Citizen comments?
Yes, question as a new commissioner, um in terms of how you work the agendas, when? Is a uh a good time for a commissioner to request a future agenda?
Uh now or?
I mean, where in the agenda is that appropriate to bring up?
Uh on item twelve.
Yeah.
On item twelve.
There's an item for it, yeah.
Okay.
Uh so going once, going twice uh for citizen comments? All right, okay. Uh agenda for next meeting. Does anybody have things that they wanna talk about?
Actually, I wanna bring up something for a future meeting, not next meeting, but I'm just gonna use this number twelve to to bring it up. Um I really appreciate the the commission does a land. Um, I really appreciate that the commission does a land acknowledgement. And yet, um, as someone who's worked with tribes a lot for over twenty years, um, and I've done a lot of talking and learning about land acknowledgements, I probably would respectfully decline to read it at this meeting. And the reason I say that is that I haven't been part of discussions that led to choosing these words and deciding what we actually do with this, like, why are we doing the acknowledgement? And how do we take this message of the acknowledgement into our actual work? So some of you have been on a pitch for a long time. I'm assuming there was some discussion that this didn't just float in from somewhere. I'm assuming there was some discussion that, hey, we want to do this, we think it's the right thing to do. This is what we wanna say, and this is what it means for our work. And so I'd like to be part of a discussion like that at some point. Because until that point, I don't feel I can honestly represent these words from a place of respect and actual intent. So I'm just, you know, and I'm not, I'm not saying this from, I think this is wrong or try even anything like that. I just don't feel like I can own these words until I've been part of that discussion with this group.
I respect that group, and I, I personally also don't feel comfortable reading this, because it's not relevant to me personally, in my experience and my ancestry. But I do believe that, you know, I understand where it comes from, so I appreciate your comment there, but perhaps in the future.
I mean, I, as I said, I think it's really important to, I mean, I work, most weeks I have interactions with tribal partners. Um, and I really value that tremendously, and I've heard from many of them about kind of, you know, like, you know, looking and muttering when they are part of an event where there's a clearly kind of pro forma landing on. But somebody kind of says it, and then it's, then we move on. And I've also seen them really appreciate it when they can hear that it's coming from a place of not just sincerity, but thoughtfulness. And, you know, what does this mean to us? So, you know, it's, it's a delicate space. And so that's why I'm uncomfortable with it. It's just that it's a, it's a dodgy space. And I, I would wanna be sincere if I was the one reading it, and, and I'm not saying others aren't. I just haven't been part of that conversation of the same.
Articulate the white elephant about, that's in the room about this, there's a lot of conversation about it. It's just white people feel better, because they can say this.
Sometimes, but it doesn't have to be just.
It's not always, but that is.
I didn't hear what you said, David.
The, it's, it's a, uh, there's, uh, conversation circulating that by, I reading this statement, it's for white people to feel better.
What, for sure. Well, I think just in the last full, a handful of minutes and out of just respect for the fact that we have a lot of new commissioners since we first adopted this, um, that it, I would be very glad to see it on, uh, a future agenda to talk about it, to talk about its, you know, uh, its origins and its purpose, and, um, hopefully that it, it, it wasn't intended to be, um, having been the person that suggested it, um, and wrote it, uh, with, with the commissioners at that time. Uh, it wasn't intended, uh, to be the end of anything, um, or to make anybody feel good. It was just the acknowledgement that the work we're doing in planning commission is about the land that we live in. And, um, and that we were part of a, a greater history, uh, and to not lose sight of that. And, um, and personally, um, ha- having worked, uh, with our, um, Indigenous Advisory, uh, uh, Committee at our Natural History Museum, um, which has been in place for decades. Uh, we've put a lot of thought as a university into, you know, to our own work with indigenous communities. And, and my personal hope was that this was just, uh, a way of leading up, you know, in our city, um, uh, from the planning commission, so that, uh, this was just a starting place, not an ending place in what I hope is a longer, um, pathway of work with, uh, our indigenous folks. And, and, and there, and you have, uh, as you said, uh, worked with native communities, and there are many people in our region who have. But our city by and large is, um, not engaged at, at, at the city level, um, in that. And so I think that that, that was my purpose in bringing it to the commission years ago. Um, but yeah, I would love to put it on the agenda and talk about it, and certainly, um, ensure that it's still relevant for our body and, and, um, and current, so, uh, that's fine with me, uh, Phil. I, I don't have a, a good view over, you know, what, um, what our work plan looks like with our consultants on the comp plan. But I would say that where, when we have time in the next month or two, I, I would love to see this on the agenda.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at how, how busy they're gonna keep you and where.
Right.
Fight lanes, but yeah, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the tickers.
Yeah, super, thank you.
Can I move to look at this topic after the call?
Well, I, I, I don't, but I, I do wanna say, I mean, I, what I heard was that there was at least one person who was uncomfortable or at least a, a few of you that, um, aren't quite sure why we say it. And I think it's important to clarify that, and so I, I would like to spend a little bit of time. This doesn't need to be multiple meetings. Um, we can have a conversation, we can see where that takes us, we can vote to keep it or not. Um, but, uh, but I think if, if there's anyone who's uncomfortable or confused as to why it starts our meetings, that, that it's worth talking about.
Yeah, I guess I would also say that I would hope that we would be, I mean, and I'm not saying, okay, we need to do it before we meet with a council. So again, this, this is really important and time-sensitive, but I would hope that we would be thinking about these issues in this paragraph as we make decisions about the comp plan, right?
That, that was the intent, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I don't wanna wait in that sense, because it's like, well, let's make sure we all kind of understand why we have these words. And then are there ways for us to reflect that in what we bring forward as our recognition, so? But it doesn't have to be like meetings and meetings, it's more about how can we, when we have time, can we work this issue?
Yep, well, and, and then I would say, knowing that this, you know, has been brought up and that we will look at this in the future, I would highly encourage each of you to, you know, to, it's a part of public record how we got here and the discussions of it. Um, you know, there are also, there's an abundance of material. I'm also glad to talk with any of you. Um, but it would be good for everyone to sort of, if you're not already familiar with land acknowledgements and, and how that ought to be part of a broader, um, body of work, uh, you know, please, if, if you have any concerns about it, um, maybe spend a little time be, coming familiar, um, so that we can have a, an informed conversation when we do put it on our agenda.
Maybe you or Nick could help me understand about the timeframe when it was kind of, when you brought it forward and what discussions happened. I'd love to go just look at some, you know.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, super, um, anything else for the good of the whole? All right, um, well then, I would love to take a motion to adjourn and send all of you back to your warm homes and happy lives.
I move to you, Eric. Sir.
All those in favor? Opposed? Um, great, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. And, um, particularly thank you for our partners for a very informative presentation, and we'll see you next month.